Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us bow heads, please. Our Father which art in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves to do diligence for the city of Cartersville, where as you can come down, be one in the midst of this meeting, keep everything cordial and in order, and keep us all one accord, and for this we will be so grateful, where as this blessing and all blessings, in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
We're honored to have members of the Boy Scout Troop 15 here in Cartersville to lead us in the pledge this evening.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, gentlemen. Ms. Over the roll, please.
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward 2.
Man, man.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Derry Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tamrin, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor, the first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was held on February the 1st. Chair, we'll undertake a motion if there's any edits, corrections, deletions, or if none. Proceed and make motions as you wish.
Much to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a public hearing to start things off tonight. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us going with Z-18-01, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you noted, this is a rezoning request. This is a rezoning of approximately 54 acres, from mining, MN zoning, and GC, or general commercial zoning, to the MF-14 category for an apartment complex. It's located on East Main Street, pretty much adjacent to the existing Avonlea apartment development. With that, I'd like to note the property was properly posted and advertised, and there appears to be no conflicts of interest on this. And with that, the city departments that review the request have reviewed it. The two comments that came back were from the Water Department noting that the developer would be required to do a water and sewer study for capacity and pressure issues, and that would be at the cost to the developer. Other than that, there were no negative comments from any of the city departments. The city also did receive a letter from the city's school system, who had some concerns with that. They had noted they weren't going to be able to be at the Planning Commission meeting, and requested that the Planning Commission table the application. The Planning Commission did take that into consideration, but chose to move forward, since there would be two more hearings with the city council. With that, they held a public hearing and recommended approval of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Menino at this point? Sorry, Randy, I'm having trouble talking tonight. Mr. Menino.
Who's the school, the school board's chief complaint?
Their letter is in your package. They noted that...
Stand for lots of students?
They felt that the city should be 70% home ownership, and we're only at like 51% home ownership versus rental. That was noted, and then typically, I can't speak for them, they had, they had concerns about adding more property that will be rental within the city.
Is it just the rental percentage versus the homeownership percentage?
That's all they referenced in their letter. They may add other concerns they may have wanted to raise in person, but in the letter, all that was referenced was the percentage of, according to their statistics they were using, which I don't think we've independently verified, were homeowner versus rental.
Correct, and a lot of the rentals in the city are actual single-family homes. There's only been 14 individual units built in the last 10, 10 years in the city of Cartersville when it comes to apartments, but their letter did note that they preferred that the city be 70% home ownership and 30% rental.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you, Randy. I will open up a public hearing for file case Z-18-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time, and when doing so, please state your name and address for our clerk, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jeff Watkins, 128 West Cherokee Avenue. As Mr. Menino indicated, the applicant, Quintus Corporation, is seeking to develop an upscale apartment complex on Main Street next door to Avonlea. With me tonight for Quintus is Jeff Carter. He'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. First, I would like to point out that Quintus, the applicant, owns Avonlea, which is next door. Quite frankly, Avonlea is probably, I would, I would argue is the nicest apartment development, upscale gated apartment development we have in Cartersville. The proposed development, I pointed this out to the Planning Commission, I wanted to make sure everyone knew. The proposed gated apartment development is expected to consist of 104 one-bedroom apartments, 122 two-bedroom, and then 12 three-bedroom apartments, for a total of 238 apartments.
How many three-bedroom, Mr. Watkins?
Twelve.
Thank you.
The rent, estimated rent, expected rent for one-bedrooms is $1,020 to $1,210 per month. The two-bedroom, $1,400, $16, $1,500, $19 per month, and the 12 three-bedroom units at $1,700 per month plus. Some of them may be a little more than that. I don't want to get too far into it, but in light of the letter from the school, I wanted to address it. Not to mention the fact that I may be fortunate enough one day in the future to be representing another apartment developer, and I wanted to get the council at least in line to consider this. Not that I can convince you, but I would like to make a few arguments real quickly. If you take the figures and facts that were proposed by Dr. Hinesley in the letter, take them for the truth, which I have no reason to doubt it. I don't really think they, they make an argument that apartments are bad for the school system. Indeed, all they do show to me is that we got a lot of homes that are being rented, and we need some apartments, especially upscale apartments. There's no nexus in that letter that, okay, if we have two more apartment developments in this town, even if they were a little lower than Class A, maybe Class B, Class B minus, there's no nexus that that fact in and of itself is bad for the school system. The fact is, things are changing when it comes to the market, when it comes to what people want. There's a whole lot of baby boomers retiring, but we've got a lot of folks, Gen X, millennial, whatever you want to call them, that don't want to own a big home, don't even want to own a home, certainly don't want a yard. They want everything taken care of for them, and they just want to pay a monthly rent. And as we try to provide housing for potential employees, all the industry that the city's doing a great job bringing in, we've got to consider that. And I would argue that the thought that if it's an apartment, it's going to be bad for the school system is just outdated, and I disagree with it completely. And I hope some of the things I'm pointing out might be convincing. In regards to this specific development, I think it's readily apparent that it's a gated community that's going to be upscale, and there's nothing about this development that would be bad for the school system. In fact, you could argue, if you took this same piece of property that's topographically challenged, I think at the Planning Commission, Carl Lugeans, the engineer, indicated he thought you might be able to get 50 houses if it was zoned for that. What I would argue, that's not even half of what the tax base will be for this development. If you use a similar apartment development like this, you're looking at $200,000 plus for your ad valorem taxes each year. If you're lucky enough to have 50 houses at $200,000 apiece, that's, what, $50, maybe $2,000 a year in taxes? That's only $50,000. So, the drain from an ad valorem tax standpoint, really, that argument doesn't hold up. You got one location for the bus to pull up and pick the kids up, and a lot of these type of developments have a lot of single spouses that have their kids on the weekend. It doesn't mean they're there during the week. They may be with the other spouse that actually has a house. But I would just ask that you consider those. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The representative for Quintus, Mr. Carter, is here also, and I reserve any further time I have for her.
Mr. Watkins, I have a question for you relative to Avonlea. Maybe this is a question for you or for the apartment owner. Seems to me, relative to size, Avonlea, the number of units can be roughly the same size?
228 units compared to the estimated 238 for this development.
Is there any, is there any number that would say how many students in the school system are in Avonlea?
Well, I don't have anything to back it up, and a lot of this is based on what the manager has observed and what may or may not be in the lease, because you know, a lot of times the kids aren't listed. I believe the estimate for Avonlea is there's approximately 50 students in that development, maybe 10 of which goes to private school, maybe 20 of which rides the bus. Now, I don't have any, any documentation to prove that. That might be a little less in reality, or it might be a little more, but I think that's, that's kind of what I think Avonlea has, and there's really no reason to think this wouldn't be any different.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Watkins at this point?
One, a couple of questions. Mr. Watkins, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I knew, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and I understood that Mr. Carter, he said about people, about how many people would you put into an apartment, and he used the term "heartbeats," which is a neat term. So, I'd say you only have, you have three-bedroom, you only have, what, 12-bedroom units?
Yes, sir.
12 three?
12, 12, yes.
So, and then multiple are two, so how many children, I think, are we looking at? I'm not sure about that, you know, in, in 12 units. So, just, just an observation. How many, what's the breakdown in Avonlea?
I have that. Bear with me. Avonlea has 91 bedroom, 102 two-bedroom, and 36 three-bedroom. So, it'd be more than half of what the three-bedroom are for this development. And again, I think that's more driven toward the market. Quintus, Mr. Carter's company, has apartment developments all over the state and in other states, and I believe. And that's just kind of what the markets, they're, they're looking at more the young professional one-bedroom, maybe two-bedroom.
So, to follow up with that, right now, you have it scaled at 238 units. What would be probably the max units you would put in this space? Because we're, right, we were not going to hold you to 238, so what would be the max units that you could put on this?
I asked after that meeting, and thank you for bringing that up, because I failed to mention this, after the meeting, Mr. Carter and I talked with the engineer, and I believe the maximum they could get on this, if the site would work with the soil, no rock, are able to move the dirt, is 350 units. But in light of the preliminary studies, it looks like 238 is pretty, pretty much what they're looking at doing on this site. And we would even agree to a condition of that, because that's significantly, I think, still less than what you could put with the zoning on the site. But because of the topo, it's going to be very difficult to do that.
So, the parking would change too if you went to max? Would that would take in more parking? How many parking spaces do you have right now? Is it two per?
Should be two, yes, sir.
All right. And have you, the barrier is still 25 feet, is that, or what is your, we look at this, I think we're looking at the, at 25 feet from the neighbors, the buffer?
And that was the other reason I was going to mention that. The developer, I think, according to me now, require 25 to buffer here and here, and what the applicant is willing to petition is a 5-foot buffer, because there were several folks from MLK at the Planning Commission meeting, not there in opposition, some of them might be here or not. They weren't necessarily there in opposition, they were there to give an idea of what's going on with this, how it would affect us, and what kind of buffer we're looking at. And I discussed with Mr. Carter afterwards, you know, can we make this work, will we have more of a buffer to protect them? And that's still there, although, if we're fortunate enough to be there for them at the next year, we'll prove that.
Do y'all have a recommended number from y'all's?
50, we'll agree to 50 feet.
50 feet, okay.
50 feet will work, I believe.
So, double than what they require?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, what's the occupancy level of the apartment complexes that's there now?
97.
Is there a waiting list?
Joe, I just, I just want to thank you for bringing up the, sort of, the issue with the letter. I had to kind of notice that as well earlier. Glad to draw to the council's attention, that there just really is no next between what the, seems to be the principal complaint of the school is in relation to the development itself. And I appreciate you all being here to give us some information.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Watkins?
Just one, and I, he may have said it, and I may have missed it, which happened some.
No, never.
But did you actually recommend a number that y'all would cap the unit?
350.
350, okay.
This is on a hill, right? I mean, Carl, as an engineer perspective, you have to do some cutting out and a lot of grading on this to get it?
Yes. It's the reason all that open land is there on the back. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue with the public hearing for Z-18-01. Again, anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. Once again, sir, please state your name and your address for our clerk, please.
James Baker, 713 MLK Drive. We were here, as he mentioned earlier, at the Planning Commission meeting last week, and they assured us that they would do more than necessary to ensure that the buffer would be 25 feet or more, and he's addressed that. Our concern was the wildlife, natural habitat, vegetation, and we already got that in the yards. We got deer in the yard. We got our big groundhogs. We got, now, I know that's natural habitation for the animals in there. There are plenty up in there, so I'm sure that when they start construction, that was one of our concerns, snakes in the yards. We haven't seen any bear. But deer and, and other wildlife and such. And then the other concern was that when they constructed Aldi's down there, there was a lot of red dust, and not a very good job was done to, for lack of proper descriptions, to keep that way, it would not spread around when we come out the house, and the cars were red and everything, and that wife had called a couple of times about the city coming in, watering it down, whatever was necessary. Those were our concerns, not so much against, but just that they be addressed and be known to somebody. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. I'll continue on with the public hearing for Z-18-01, and again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for Z-18-01, and council will take this up for final consideration at our meeting on March the 1st, I do believe that date is. And thank you. So, we'll move on. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item.
Mayor, I believe the next item is a proposed change to the city charter, which will give y'all the flexibility to allow a contract to be entered into with a new city manager, which will track the term of the elected council at that time, and also to clear up some confusion regarding council interference with staff and the responsibilities related there, too. It has been properly advertised as required by the code, and it is recommended for your approval by staff.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Keith on this item? And again, this is the first reading of the ordinance. We'll take this up for a second reading and final vote at our meeting on March the 1st. We have a discussion item.
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me one second before you did that. Tommy Sanders, would you talk to the gentleman before he leaves that mentioned about the dust and all from Aldi to make sure they have the proper contact for that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. That's all. I apologize. I just, I didn't want him to get, sneak out without Tommy having a chance to do that.
I understand. Thank you for that. We do have a discussion item relative to the downtown event and rental policies, and Ms. Reed, if you'll go ahead and get us started with that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I have put before you an expanded facility rental policy, primarily to address the expansion of events downtown. We have an increasingly busy event calendar. This gives some larger parameters for the facilities and the use of said facilities in the downtown district. So, I'm open for any questions the council may have regarding what I presented.
There was a discussion earlier that you, the mayor brought a good point, and that was, at the very minimum, whatever the city's going to be out as far as expenditures, I think that whoever's going to be renting this thing needs to at least provide that. You know, not trying to make a profit thing, just to cover our expenses.
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea how much this kind of thing is?
I would say that once this policy is in place, when we are operating under known, you know, terms and policies that we can apply evenly across the board, it takes less than an hour of staff time to be able to, you know, integrate this information, process it, make sure all the forms are in place, and then whatever nominal contact needs to happen as far as questions or, you know, policies, things of that nature, we do address. But for the most part, once our events are in place and the people who are hosting them know what's expected and what the parameters are, we have not had any issues with needing in excess of staff time for hosting things of that nature.
But do we have, I feel like we have, such as festivals, whatever, downtown, and the streets are closed, generally we have, generally we have a, we have police officers posted around here. I don't know if these guys are on duty or off, but off duty, obviously, we have to pay for that, and on duty technically. You know, I don't know as far as what's going to be offered, whether it's refreshments, things of that nature, but cleanup after the fact. I mean, I've got to think all these things are going to cost the city money.
They do.
Just flat on not charge them anything. We have to pick up a bill for that kind of stuff. I don't, let me see, why we should do that, you know. I don't, I don't know how much of an expense it would be, but I think that the very minimum, the people who will be wanting to rent this out should be required to pay it. And who knows? You know, maybe it could be a, on the back end type deal, or try that at first and see if we can get, ever do get paid. If we do, we just may do it that way, and if you do a good job, you know, being prepared when you, when you start the event and clean up afterwards, you might not have an issue, but.
We do have deposits that we require for people renting our facilities to address that side of things, and then when police are used, that is something that our people who are renting work out with the police directly as far as paying officers and any safety requirements.
They're taking care of that.
Correct.
I would just make one comment that we had talked about, and that would be kind of settling a little bit about that, the space under the bridge next to Founder's Oak, where that you would have to, you would have to rent Founder's Oak and then use the space under the bridge as overflow. Because using the space under the bridge is, would recall, would require closing public street, and we still need to look into that. I think, I think we maybe talked to Ms. Reed about looking into that, because that is a public street, and there would, I think, maybe it was, maybe that banger is a one-way street.
Correct. No, you're, you're absolutely right.
So, we'd have to maybe make sure that we have, not compel someone to break the law of that.
Correct. Access and egress for the folks who have.
So, to, to your point, I think, you know, we rent Founder's Oak, we can use the bridge as overflow, and leave the space past the abutment, past the support, leave that free, and let, let, as, as she stated, I think it's a nonprofit organization's use of that for free without any restriction, unless we start to incur some. Presently, the miniature uses that space, takes all their trash, does not acquire any type of city services. So, I think we can maybe come to that agreement, and I think that would work. And, but, I mean, that would, that would take off. It's just an option to look at, maybe using that as an overflow, but that you would have to rent, so we, you would, we would have those fundings.
And I mean, honestly, the concept of a, of a deposit just went completely away. So, that, I think that right there, ideally, we'd probably address it if there is an issue after the fact, a cleanup like that. So, I'm just glad to hear, you know, we have things at that place to prevent a missing contract.
Well, as discussed in the, in the work session, I think, you know, what it really boils down to is, is the DDA is asking for the ability to rent the spa, an additional space that they don't currently rent. And if council wants to have that happen, as Mr. Lovell pointed out again in the work session, it would require an ordinance change and some other things for council to approve of, to give them the authority to rent that space, or, you know, or we can just say, we don't want them to rent that space. We want them just to use whatever spaces they currently have. My one concern more for, you know, more relative to this, is the fact that, you rent out a space underneath the bridge, if we were allowed that to happen, there are so many other big, larger events that could be going on in, you know, in the downtown area, in the, you know, in the depot area. You know, all of a sudden, you could, you could have something that might bring 400 people downtown, and you can't because you've got this small renter that's over here, that those two things can't go on simultaneously. So, again, we've had this as a discussion item a couple times. I don't know if you want a little bit more time to discuss it, or a little more time to think about, but what we're really looking for is, is really that, is what kind of direction do we want to give the DDA relative to the use of that space, and.
And of course, you guys will have the opportunity for any additional comments if we were to bring an ordinance for review and any amendments that council thought would be desirable or appropriate.
Well, sure, obviously. Be careful, be careful with scheduling, so that if we do have a bigger fit down here at the depot area, do not rent that area out, so that we have plenty of space and there will be an access, which I'm sure you guys would do, I mean, obviously.
We do try.
I have no problem additionally using that, that's on me.
Okay, so I'll bring something back in a future meeting for review and consideration of council, if, all right?
All right.
I would suggest, before you do that, you need to have some meetings with the police, the fire, and the gas department, because potentially closing those streets, especially with the gas department being located in that area now, could create some conflicts and just.
Absolutely.
Clear up all that with them in the first place.
And also, and really talk about the fact that I guess they're parking some vehicles in that space typically, too, are they not?
They are.
So, okay.
Yeah, so.
We'll go ahead and have those discussions, as Mr. Lovell recommended, and we'll see where we go from there, okay?
Happy to do it.
Thank you. You also have the next item relative to contracts for downtown sculpture walks.
Correct. So, back in November, the DDA was awarded a grant for public art through the Georgia Council for the Arts, so this is a continuation of that process. We are looking to bring a rotating sculpture walk to downtown with three pieces of art. Those are the three contracts that you see in your agenda packet, one of which will be a loan from the Booth Museum, one of which is a loan for possible sale from the artist, and one of which is a commission from the African-American Quilt Documentation Project that will ultimately be given as a gift of public art to the city. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them, but we, staff does recommend approval of that, since it is time-sensitive to some extent, grant-funded project. We do already have budgeted funds for this, so it's, it's pretty much ready to go, should council deem it approvable. You already do have the budgeted money for it? Correct. Outside of our general fund budget, these would be coming from downtown improvements from our Business Improvement District Fund.
If you remember when, actually, way back when they were going to apply for this grant, I think it was made pretty clear by the city manager and also council that, that the money, the, any matching pieces or any costs that were to be incurred were, I guess that was the guarantee that y'all came to us, that you would raise the money privately.
Yes, sir.
And so, they've done exactly that. Any other discussion or questions?
Mayor, I would just like Mr. Porter to address whether the, it's, the city is able to provide the insurance coverage that's referenced in, in these agreements.
Yes, that is affirmed with our consent base, and there is a code of qualified rights.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion's approved.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll let, one minute to sort that out.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, you have the next three, please.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is the fiber optic cable.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is the fiber optic cable supplies. Fiber department's been adding customers over the last several months and we need to replenish them, 36-count and 60-count fiber. Cost is $34,434.52 and recommended for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Dan.
The AED defibrillators is something the safety committee's been looking at in the past. And we have gone out and got some vendor to quote us for, some ones that the electric and the recreation department currently use, this particular brand. The price for 30 defibrillators is $35,280.90. It'll come from the workers' comp safety fund. One change from your packet was I went back to the vendor. They have what they call AccuTrak, which is, allows us to track the battery life and all. They quoted us initially a three-year license at no cost and I got them to do a five-year license, which saved us a couple hundred dollars more. No change in the price, but just allows us to track the use of those defibrillators from a central point. It allows us just to keep up with those devices besides having personnel look at those periodically.
Any discussion on this item? Not chair, will anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final item approved, Dan.
Yes, Mayor. This item is for our new gas facility. The Balfour Beatty is the construction manager at risk. As you recall, this firm basically is overseeing the project. They've gone out to bid for the pre-engineering metal building that was previously discussed several months back. We had that on order, but the price that was included, handed out to you this evening for Fox Building is $1,609,428. They also went out for the site work package and the underground utilities. The low bidder on that was Dennis Taylor out of Duluth. Second low bidder was Kirkpatrick and Sons. They were about $102,000 more. Largo paving, received a low bid on the asphalt paving. And then the site fencing is Cardisville Fence. The total that I'm asking the city council to approve, subject to the city attorney's final approval, is for a price not to exceed for these particular items for $3,871,871. As I mentioned in the work session, there's a couple of things that we're looking at. We have a pond consultant in there that is part of this, dollars in there because we're trying to determine, and it'll be brought back to the city council on aeration or fountain in the recreational pond that's going to be out there. There is, we're working on easement with Shaw Industries, which may reduce the cost by about $37,000, about $30,000 to $37,000 for, on the east side of the property. We won't have to do as much earthwork if we're able to get that easement. And then there's some other questions out there, or dollars in there that may come down based on what's determined on the site. The one question I know that's come up that city council will discuss is the fence. This will be perimeter fence around the entire property as, that was shared with the public previously. There will not be any gate access at this point in time, but the city council can make those changes if you so want to do so at this evening.
You're asking us to make that decision this evening, right now?
Yeah, if you approve this bid, it'll allow us to move forward with Cardisville Fence when they start the site work. The plan is to get contract, contractors start in March, early March, get the land disturbance permit moved forward. The plans have been, the site work plans have already been approved by staff internally. But one of the things we have is either we're going to either put a permanent fence up or we're going to have to put up a temporary fence. But if the council approves this tonight, this is approving a permanent fence on the site.
Okay. Obviously, Councilman Step, matter of fact, he texted me, his meeting ran late and he's not able to be here. He and I were both involved with those public meetings with the neighbors. I know that we have at least one of the neighbors here tonight. And my memory is a little bit foggy as to whether or not, because I know there were some people that said, yes, I want a fence or a gate, and others were like, no, we don't want a gate. I don't make motions per se, but I, I guess I'd like to say if we, if we, council does choose to approve this, have some kind of caveat in there or some, just note it that, because I do think we ought to have, go ahead and start with the permanent fence. But I also think that we've spent a lot of time on the front end trying to engage the neighborhood with that. And I just simply don't remember where we ended up on that. So to say we're just gonna just, we're just gonna do this and that's the way it is, I still think there's an opportunity to engage with the, with the neighbors a little bit more. And at least, and again, the people that don't want any gates there, they're, they're not going to be happy. And the people that wanted gates probably are, you know, it's just, there's got to be some middle ground, I think, that we're common sense would, would kind of rule. And I understand what you said earlier before the meeting about there might be some liability issues if we put a gate and people walk onto the property. But again, I think we've done, I'm proud of the fact that the city has put itself through the entire process to the same standard that a private industry would put itself through. And so I'd hate for all the work and the time that we put into doing that and engaging to go ahead and pass something that says that we might potentially be going against with, with that, with some of those people, neighbors wanted. So again, I'm sorry to go on a little bit about it, but I would simply ask if council were to make a motion to approve this with the permanent fence, that there would be the stipulation that there'd be the potential for some gates to be put in there depending on where the, where the neighborhood put in it, whatever, after some, some more input from the people that are the adjacent property owners. Because I said, I believe Councilman Step would approve that. We made some assurances that, that I want to make sure that we don't just totally do away with.
So the gates are not required?
Well, gates are required for the fence, but gates are not required. The gates that I recall were being, that were being discussed were between the subdivision back there along the back, what I call the back of the property. And to allow them to have a potential gated access where they could walk through and go to, walk around the walking trail that was going to be around the water feature there. And I was at some of those meetings and I recall exactly what the mayor said. We had some people stand up in favor of it and we had some people stand up against it. And no consensus was ever made. But Mayor, if I may, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask.
Please.
Dan, what is the height of this proposed fence?
I believe it's five foot. Is that correct? Six foot? Six-foot fence.
Six feet. Randy, is, do we allow a six-foot front fence in that area in that zoning district? Or what, is a variance needed for that?
Well, the fence, it's more along the rear property line if we have a gate.
Right.
Past the 20-foot front setback, you need to meet at four feet.
So it would have, under our corner?
I don't know where the fence is going to be at.
Yeah, but, I mean, he just said it was going along the front, which I assume is the frontage. So if it's six feet, to do this process the way that the council has directed staff to do that, I do think if you want to have a six-foot fence along the frontage, we do need to go through the variance process for that to get public input on that. That's the only point I wanted to clarify, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, because thank you, because I was only thinking of the rear portion of the property.
Yeah, this is really a perimeter and the sides and the rear. The front is going to be up by the building. Trying to remember Gary, if you recall, or Richard. It's, the front is going to be more shrubbery. It's going to meet the city code on that. There is going to be, when you get to inside our property, you know, because there's going to be gated access into the facility. So anybody can't just come in there. So kind of a, starting the rear part of the building.
As long as it's going to be back, they can be, okay, be tall.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I haven't seen the plan, so I just wanted to bring that out. If you are having the fence over that, that four feet in that area, you do need to go through variance.
And the front will have the shrubbery and stuff and the fence will just be where we can have gated access, similar to the gas facility down in other property that we have.
So I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear on what we're deciding at the moment. So the gates are what is in question and they're on the backside of the property.
It would allow the residents to obtain access to the recreational pond area on the backside of the property, yes.
And there's no liability with the city allowing people just to come in and out?
It is public property. The city would be designating that as basically a public park. You have immunity for certain recreational activities as long as they're, as long as y'all have the property designed properly and everything else. So, so say there's no liability, in general liability is, there is no liability for the city for providing recreational uses for the public. There could be specific instances related to this that could create liability, but I'd have to study the plans and all that to answer that question.
And actually, what we're, I guess what's being sought is the approval of the three-point, the amount not to exceed, sorry, I got to throw these on. The, not to exceed 3.8, $3,871,871 to, for this portion of the construction of the gas facility. And like I said, the only, as part of that number is the fact that it's just a permanent gate that, or a permanent fence that at this point doesn't include gates. And so the numbers may change slightly based on that. So like I said, if I, I would just kindly ask that if council, if a motion is forthcoming that it would include the opportunity to add gates, depending on what the, what the neighborhood really wants.
Not a problem, man.
I'll make a motion that we approve this with the flexibility to add a gate along the back fence line if it's agreed to with the neighborhood.
And is your motion, is it being approved subject to final approval by Dan, the city manager and the city attorney's office?
Yes. Can I, can I add to his motion?
Uh, not yet. The mayor could call for a second of his motion and then somebody could ask to amend it under Robert's rules of order.
So I'll call for a second.
Now, I would like to amend it to also include, to also take into consideration, to check back with those individuals to make sure there wasn't something bigger that we may have missed, that we couldn't remember as of right now, today, that the neighborhood was talking about and discussing in relation to the, to the fence.
Okay. I'm trying, I'm sorry.
To just confirm that there was, there's no other issues relating to the fence itself that were discussed that maybe we are not thinking of today, that was brought up by the neighborhood. Because it sounded like earlier in our discussions that you, there were some things that were discussed that you could really remember.
I would say the only thing that was really at issue was, was whether or not we were going to have gates, a gate or multiple gates back there.
That's it?
That's, that's really it. And I would think that if there was something that we ended up swinging and missing on, that could come back before council and we can clean it up there.
Then I subtract my addition and second his motion.
Great. So thank you. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan. Bob, you've got the next two.
Good evening, everybody. First up, we have some additions to our sewer lift stations. We operate five sewer lift stations, four of which were constructed at a time when certain safety devices that are common practice now were not common practice. And because we have to do regular maintenance to those places, we have personnel out there working around open hatches, pits that are 15 to 20 some odd feet deep. We would like to retrofit those existing lift stations with the safety devices that are now commonplace. We took bids for that. The low bid came from Coal Pump Technology. This will be to install the necessary safety equipment and again, for those locations. Their total bid was $18,224.33 and we recommend that for your approval.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
I'm looking to approve.
I'll hold that motion. You've got a question?
A quick question.
Sure.
I didn't ask earlier. Are all these the same or are they one-offs from each other, these?
They are, they are not exact duplicates of each other. They, they'll function the same, but the hatches may have different dimensions that they're protecting. So that is part of the issue. The other is, is they have to be constructed of stainless steel because the hydrogen sulfide gas that comes off of these, if you put carbon steel in it, it'll, it'll be useless in a, in a couple of years.
Okay, so these are, these are specifically made for this
That's right.
particular gate.
That's right.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Is your motion still good?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please. Bob?
Yes, sir. Next up is our Center Road Sewer Replacement Project. This project has been in various states of design and construction for a number of years. This will be the completion of that leg of sewer. Bids were received on January 17th. There were seven bidders in total. The low bid was from Wade Coote's company at $849,005. The bid has been reviewed by the design engineer and he has concurred that it is a good bid. And we therefore recommend that bid for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council. You received in your packet a summary of the visioning session that was held a couple of weeks ago, as well as the goals that were set for 2018. And we're asking for discussion or approval of the goals so we can get those in place and move forward in 2018. And David has put them up on the projector if you're interested in looking at them.
Thank you. The only, I guess, comment I'll make relative to what ended up as goals, I know there was some information that was put out, I guess, earlier this week or maybe last week relative to items that were discussed at visioning. And some of the items in that contain things that aren't really contained in our goals. So there was basically an overview relative to some of the properties and what we may or may not be doing with certain properties with the city. Certainly, if we have properties that are being underutilized or feel that we can use them in other areas or, or quite frankly, redevelop them, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that. I think our current gas department is a good example where we'll have development costs, but we're able to use an existing piece of land that we already owned in order to build that. So anyway, that's, that's the only point that I'll, I'll make with that. There were suggested goals and there were approved goals. And some of the suggested goals were kind of listed as approved goals. Does that make sense? Made sense to me.
That's all that matters.
So what are we supposed to do with these? We're supposed to approve these or just kind of smile at them or what?
Approve, or if you choose to make any amendments, we can make those changes and put them to you again.
There you go.
Number 36, the alcohol discussion we had regarding the alcoholiness. And the food percentage, I was under pressure after the visioning session, we pretty much determined that was a, it's a unnecessary portion of the ordinance that we were having to leave it or do comparisons. That's not my understanding of conclusion to make.
The direction I took after the meeting is that, and we're in the process of doing this now and y'all probably should get them by the end of next week, is that we were supposed to give you a compilation of other communities' ordinances that did not have food percentage cells for y'all to review and look at. And then after y'all reviewed and looked at that, then y'all would give my office direction on what you want me to exactly draft.
We had a, we had a further discussion out on Saturday that Mr. Ren is referring to. So yeah, we, we talked about it a good bit at the Saturday session. And I'll, I'll leave it to council's discretion. Again, it's on the list of things that are a set goal, that as we approve it, how we go about doing it, I think council can give staff direction from there.
I think he forgot to meet with plenty of the committee. That's a good, a good explanation of what you meant by that, so I'm good with that.
Okay. So the fact that it's in there means it's part of it. All right. I have a motion to approve them as, as submitted. Bob, a second?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. And Tom, come on forward and get us started with our next item.
I'm the mayor and council. Tonight, we have Tom Carmichael, Tom Carmichael from Carr Reeds in Ingram, our external audit firm. He will give a brief presentation of fiscal year 2017 presentation on our financials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's my privilege to be here tonight and to give you a, an overview of the fiscal year 17 audit. But before I get started, I certainly want to take this opportunity to thank Tom and his team and the work that they do certainly in, you know, helping us as we are getting through the audit process. And I'd also like to just take a quick second to commend this council for the importance that you place, you know, on your that you place, you know, on your finance department, you know, I can tell you that that's not something that I'm able to, to say with every presentation that I make, and I can just tell you, it, it certainly is nice to see that, you know, you, you acknowledge that, and certainly, you know, provide the resources that are necessary. The presentation that I'm going to work through tonight, you have in, in front of you, but one, it's a summary and just an overview of the, of the full audit, our formal reports accompany your financial statements which have been issued, they've been submitted and accepted to the state, the, uh, one more additional report that accompanies every audit, is what we refer to as auditors as our required communications report, and I'll touch on that a little bit further down in my presentation. But quickly, just to, to give you a quick overview of what I want to cover, I'm going to tell you just a little bit about our firm, just very quickly, I want to talk about the audit approach that we employ as we're going through the audit, and I'm going to just touch and give you an overview of the results for the general fund, the enterprise funds, going to touch just a little bit on your pension plan and your OPEB, give you a snapshot of the city's capital assets and long-term debt, and I'll come back to that required communications document, certainly have some room at the end for questions, but I'd also like for this to be a dialogue, so please, by all means, as I'm going through, if you have a question, just don't hesitate to stop me. So just quickly, you know, Carr Riggs and Ingram, we're the largest CPA firm in the South, the twenty-first largest nationally, you know, we're operating in over twenty-five markets in nine states, in Georgia, we've got offices in Tipton, Valdosta, and, and Atlanta, eighteen hundred professionals and three hundred partners, and that, that's all great, but really, you know, what does that mean for you? I mean, the, the biggest piece is that we're serving over four hundred and fifty governmental clients, and so, as, as there is an issue that we, you know, may need locally, we have the resources and the expertise within the firm to, to call upon when needed. So when we talk about an audit, you know, exactly what that means, gosh, I could go on way past the hour that I'm allotted here tonight to cover that, which I won't do, but generally, we employ a risk-based audit approach, that is the cascade effect of Sarbanes-Oxley, most everybody's heard that, 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 that word before, that, you know, that was the, the act passed by the SEC, these are all publicly traded companies, those standards have now made their way all the way down to every audit that we as auditors perform. And what those standards require us as auditors to do is to understand the entity and its environment, including the internal control, perform rigorous risk assessments both internally and externally, and then to provide linkage in our documentation of our work as to how we assess those risks and to the audit procedures that we've performed. So when we talk about understanding internal controls, I guess first, you know, when I refer to internal controls, what I'm referring to are the policies and procedures that your management team has designed and implemented to capture the financial data, and then report that data both internally and externally. So we're, we're, what we do is we evaluate how the key controls are designed, we perform walkthroughs on those key controls, and what I mean, when I say walkthrough, we take a transaction and literally take it all the way from inception, the approval process, all the way to the recording in your books and records, and then we determine if those key controls have in fact been implemented. When we talk about our risk assessment on any audit that we're performing, we look at overall economic conditions, revenue recognition is certainly something that in any audit that we perform that we're going to be concerned about, accounts payable cutoff with any municipality or city or county, we're also going to be looking at compliance with laws and regulations. So in terms of, you know, after we've assessed those risks, you know, what was it that we actually did to, to address those risks? You know, in terms of the revenue recognition, we tested accounts receivable and that revenue recognition, we actually performed testing of your accounts payable for unrecorded liabilities by actually looking at transactions after you're in and outside of that, that timeframe, and then certainly from a compliance testing standpoint, we looked at sales tax expenditures as well as grant agreements and the expenditures that are related there. So moving into the, to the numbers, just again, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but just a general snapshot of the general fund, you can see I've laid out the two thousand and sixteen actual versus two thousand and seventeen actual, and then compared that to the two thousand and seventeen budget. You can see that for two thousand and seventeen, and I'm going to give you just a little bit of detail in terms of budget versus actual for both your revenues and expenditures, a couple of slides over, but just kind of walking through your actual results, you had actually re, actual revenues of thirty-six million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, with expenditures of forty-two million, five hundred and sixty thousand, which left you with a deficiency before transfers of six million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You had transfers in primarily from the, your enterprise funds of three million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, small number of transfers out from the general fund of a hundred and sixteen thousand, there was a little bit of long-term debt issued which would relate to capital leases there of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and then all your other, you know, nominal revenue amounts of twenty-one thousand, left you with a net change in the general fund for the year of two mi, a deficit of two million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. But the point I want to make with that is that, you know, within your general fund, you have restricted and unrestricted funds, so the bulk of that deficit, or actually more than the deficit, there was a two-point-eight million dollar deficit that related to funds that were spent, as it related to the recreational facilities. And I've got a slide that sort of shows a breakdown of the fund balances, that'll explain that a little bit more, so actually, in your unassigned funds, you actually had a surplus of about a half a million dollars. So just to give you, you know, a quick comparison from revenues budgeted versus actual, again, your budgeted total was forty million, fifty-six thousand versus your actual revenue of thirty-six million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Again, that was under budget of three million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, but again, in terms of, you know, the way that that's accounted for from a budgetary perspective, there was roughly about three-point-one million dollars of revenues that related to the, again, those expenditures with the recreational activities, and what I mean by that is those revenues were received in fiscal sixteen, they were spent in fiscal seventeen, so you're now, just now matching those up.
Would those be classified as taxes?
They were, yes. Then, to move to your expenditures, again, budgeted expenditures of forty-three million, nine hundred and five thousand versus actual of forty-two million, five hundred and sixty thousand, you know, I'm not going to go through all of them, about line by line, but you can see that every department was under budget and, and for a total of a million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So going back, you know, what I, you know, I had, I had kind of reconciled your, your results. You know, you, you had a deficit in the general fund of two-point-three million dollars, you would add that to your beginning fund balance of eleven million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, left you with a fund balance of nine million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So this graph here, you know, again, just kind of shows you the breakdown of that nine-point-six million dollars. You can see that, you know, the blue is actually the, the unassigned fund balance, which actually increased half a million dollars, it was the decrease, you know, the bulk of that two-point-eight million dollars within those restricted funds, which again, you know, were with the bond issuance in two thousand and sixteen, they were restricted for use only for those, those types uses in recreational activities. You know, we, so you can see, you know, the trend is that, you know, you've got some increase in your, in your fund balance, a lot of times, we're asked, well, what, what should our fund balance be? And, you know, the answer to that, you know, which everybody hates to hear, is it depends, you know, it depends on what the city's long-term strategic goals are, so you can't just out, you can't just lay out a city or a county, even with the same operating budget and the same tax base, you know, that, that fund balance may need to be different for one versus the other. Generally, what you will hear from Carl Vincent Institute and University of Georgia is anywhere from two to six months, uh, fund, expenditures, excuse me, in your fund balance, so I've kind of laid that number out, if you were just looking at that number, again, for the city, that number would be roughly about seven-point-one million dollars. The other point I would make, though, too, again, is with the city, you've got your enterprise funds that have significant resources and funds over there that transfers could easily, you know, capture that amount. So moving off of the general fund, just to touch just a little bit on the water and sewer fund, again, revenues of eighteen million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand compared to expenses, expenses of twelve million, one hundred thousand, left you with operating income of six million, ninety-three thousand dollars, you had some non-operating income and expenses, which was primarily interest expense, transfers out of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, left you with a change in net position for the year on the water and sewer fund of five million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, again, you would add that to your beginning net position of a hundred and three, nine eighty-eight, left you with a net position at the end of the year of a hundred and nine million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Next, just to touch on your electric fund, again, two thousand and seventeen, actual forty-eight million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in revenues, compared with forty-four million, seven hundred and five thousand in expenses, left you with an operating income of three million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, netting your, you know, non-operating income and expenses and your transfers out of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, left you with a change in net position of two million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for the year, you would add that to your beginning net position of twenty-three million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and would leave you with a net position at the end of the year of twenty-six million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Moving to your, your gas fund, again, actual results, revenues of twenty-two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, compared with expenses of eighteen million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, left you with operating income of three million, three hundred and one thousand, you, you know, netting your operate, non-operating income and expenses and transfers out of two million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, left you with a change in net position on the gas fund of a million, forty-one thousand dollars, you would add that to your net position at the beginning of the year of twenty-three million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, and that would leave you with a net position at June thirty, two thousand and seventeen of twenty-four million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So sort of moving off the operating results, just real quickly, just to touch on your pension plan, again, at the end of the year, there was a, a net pension liability that was recorded, covering over your enterprise funds and with your governmental activities, the total was twenty-six million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, again, that number is performed as an actuarial study that, that, that supports, supports that number, and those numbers were based on that study that was performed as of January one, two thousand and seventeen. The next slide, just to give you a snapshot of the, the OPEB plan, the post-employment healthcare plan, you can just see that there's an unfunded liability at the end of two thousand and seventeen of twenty-five million, eight hundred and nine thousand dollars, there will be some accounting changes that will be coming into play, and how that's reported, you know, that will actually go into effect for, for June thirty, two thousand and eighteen.
How does that relate to other cities?
I'm sorry.
How does that relate to other cities and municipalities?
Well, it's really, first, I can tell you, very few cities have any, have, have, have any funding for an OPEB plan, they're all unfunded liabilities, you know, and in terms of how much that end, you know, that there's so much variation in the plans, you know, to compare the numbers, I don't know that I'd really want to do that, but I can tell you that very few, if any, that we work with have, have a trust set aside, like, like with a pension plan, you're funding that liability as you go, for the most part, with that OPEB liability, that, that has not, you know, been done, so. Capital assets, moving there, yes, next slide, again, I've just, just to give you a, a quick snapshot at the end of the year, these are historical cost numbers, they don't take into account any fair market value adjustments up or down, or any depreciation, but you can just see that, you know, between your governmental activities and then your business activities, the city in total, you know, has a capital assets on their books of four hundred and twenty million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, again, before any depreciation is taken into account. Next, again, I'd just like to give you a snapshot of the city's long-term debt at the end of the year, and, you know, not going down them in, in detail, but you can see from a governmental perspective, there was total, total debt of twenty-nine million, nine hundred and three thousand dollars, on your business operations, twenty-five million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, for a total of fifty-five million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Good news with that is that that's actually, that's been termed down, actually, at the beginning of the year, it was fifty-nine million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, so there was a solid decrease of about four million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in your, in your long-term debt. So that kind of covers the, the numbers, I want to come back just quickly to the required communication document, and again, what it is, it's our formal communications to, to governance of the council, you know, that, you know, it is designed to cover a number of things, I'm going to go through those, but really, what we like to say is it's a roadmap to the financial statements, it, that, that is a document that accompanies every audit that we issue, and, you know, what it's designed to do is it talks about what our responsibility is as auditors, it talks about the significant estimates and disclosures in the financial statements, it will point you actually to those, any corrected or uncorrected misstatements or journal entries, they are listed out for you to see, if there were other, any other issues that we deem significant, you know, to your oversight, we would communicate those to you formally, I can tell you here tonight that there were none, if there were any difficulties that we encountered, or any disagreements with your management, again, we would formally communicate them to you in that document, but again, I can tell you here tonight that, that there were not. With that, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Questions?
I've, I've got one, it's just sheer curiosity. The actuary, actuarial valuations that are done for both the pension plan and the insurance, why are they done on January first instead of matching the city's, the city's budget sheet?
Generally, it's from a ti, it's from a, the, the, the time lag that it takes to get those studies done is generally when that occurs, I mean, because we have clients, very few, most of them do them at the beginning of the year, a lot of them actually have a two- or three-year deferment, but it, it is to provide the time to get all that information pulled together, because, you know, you have to have all the payroll information submitted, so that you're not, you're not waiting on the actual, actuarial report to be able to close the books, so that generally, by the time that Tom and them are closing the books, if they don't have that actuarial report, you know, in July, I mean, it's very soon thereafter that they have it, they can go ahead and make those entries instead of wait until November or December, so, but that, it's not uncommon for that.
Any other questions? Tom, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Renard, before you come up, we have two items to add to the agenda, council, I'll undertake a motion to add those two items.
Excuse me.
Thank you for the second. Nothing to sneeze at there. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
We've got two items to add, and Mr. Lovell, you have both of those items, I do believe.
Thank you, Mayor, the first item is an amendment to our speed table ordinance, basically, these are the speed limits that are approved by the state of Georgia for us to use radar and lidar on certain streets in the city, there's been only one change from our previous one that was approved in two thousand and fourteen, and that would be on Highway thirteen, where it's now four lanes going out of town, they increased that from forty-five to fifty-five. It is recommended for your approval, we do need to do it as an emergency reading, so our police officers can continue to use lidar and radar out there.
All right, so does the motion need to contain, I guess, the mere fact that we are voting on it on a first reading is sufficient enough to say it's an emergency?
You would be voting on it as an emergency reading, not a first reading.
Okay, thank you. So, chair will undertake a motion to approve this as an emergency reading.
Will you approve?
I'll submit that motion.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the other?
The next item, Mayor, is we received an adding light of notice from, and I apologize, I have no idea how to say their last name, but a Samuel Waweru and Mary Waweru, W-A-W-E-R-U, and from a law firm in Atlanta, Rickert and Nix, as a result of a automobile accident involving a city police car. Our preliminary investigation doesn't indicate any liability that we are aware of for the city at this time, based upon the information we have related to medical damages, therefore, we are requesting that y'all go ahead and deny the adding light of notice claim, and that will start the clock ticking for them to make a claim against the city if they so desire.
Thank you. Chair will undertake a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
He's got to sign the radar, to do radar, did we have to say, give him authority to sign it?
No, that was done by the ordinance, we approved it, yeah.
Come on, Tom. Oh, wait, one more thing, I'm just kidding.
I've got it as best time as you want, you know. I don't know, Mayor and council will be looking tonight at the financial report for December two thousand and seventeen and comparing it to two thousand, December two thousand and sixteen. The general fund revenues increased over last December by seventy-two thousand dollars, expenses increased by one-point-one million dollars, if you remember, we made a fire truck payment back in July. Three years of revenue are, that I look at on a monthly basis, our local office and sales tax have an increase there of about seventy thousand dollars, police finances and forfeiture have an increase there of about fifty-one thousand dollars, and building permits and inspection fees have a decrease of about... and inspection fees have a decrease of about $68,000. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last December by $175,000. Expenses increased by $726,000. This is due to increased personnel and increased capital expenses. And the gas fund revenues increased over last December by $672,000. Expenses increased by $506,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of gas, increased cost of purchased gas, and increased capital expenses. And the electric fund revenues decreased over last year by $1.9 million. Expenses decreased by $233,000, due mainly to decreased cost of purchase of electricity and decreased capital expenses. And the stormwater fund revenues increased over last December by $26,000. Expenses decreased by $44,000, due mainly to decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund revenues increased over last December by $56,000, and expenses increased by $212,000. This is due to increased capital, I'm sorry, increased personal expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. However, we are expecting a reimbursement from the GMA lease pool to offset the capital expenditure we made in December. And finally, the fiber optics fund revenues increased over last December by $65,000. Expenses increased by $246,000. This is due to increased operating expenses and increased capital expenses.
Okay. Any questions on the financial report? Comments? All right. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Saying done, Chair, undertake a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.